Can I have everybody's attention, please? We can get this meeting started or restarted.
Criminal.
All right, could I have the Myra folks come up? Wendy, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Tamai just called me a criminal and I'd like that to be called on the record.
Okay, we'll get there. Wendy, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, I'm Wendy Ellis. I'm a 34-year Brevard County resident and a Merritt Island business owner and homeowner. Today I have the privilege of representing the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency as their chairman. I'd also like to recognize several other board members who are in attendance and please stand Andy Barber and Eddie LeBron. Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to share with you some of the exciting ways that the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency is benefiting not just Merritt Island but all of Brevard County. I would especially like to thank your chairman, Commissioner Smith, for taking time out of his busy schedule to invite us to his office prior to this meeting to share details from us about Myra's ongoing projects as well as Myra's value to Brevard County. Today's my pleasure to introduce Al Vasquez, managing partner of Close Waters LLC. Al has a bachelor's of science degree from California Institute of Technology and an MBA from Harvard Graduate School of Business. His specialties are organizational performance improvement, business policy, and economic impact. Last year for Brevard County, he identified the $6.3 billion economic impact for the restoration of the Indian River Lagoon project plan. He's been a management consultant for over 20 years to Fortune 500 clients and governments, including the Florida Department of Revenue, IBM, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Nabisco, Baxter Healthcare, Sumitomo, and Cargill. Mr. Vasquez was hired by the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency to put together an economic impact study of their performance metrics. And with no further ado, Mr. Vasquez will share results of his analysis with you today. And then I'll have a few closing comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon. About two months ago, I was approached by the executive director of Myra and later the board made the decision that they wanted an outside agent to do an assessment of economic impact for Myra. And that's what I did. That's what I'm here to share with you today. We looked at analysis in three areas. One was the scale of the economics for Myra. How big are the numbers? How big are the costs? How big are the benefits? The second one was to put it in perspective of other county communities because it is a bit different. It doesn't have a city. It's an unincorporated area that has the county's CRA. And then the third area was really to look at cost benefit. What is this doing for the county? And we did that, and that's what I'll share with you today. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. I think people have spoken about this already, but like the other CRAs, this was established, Myra was established under Florida statute. The tax increment right now is sitting at about 2% of the property tax base. And that graphic is a bit deceiving. So, you know, the triangle at the top is actually a very tiny sliver of the tax base underneath. And I'll talk a little bit about the life of this CRA in a little bit. The first CRA for Merritt Island for Myra was established in 1989, and the focus was on the commercial center of Merritt Island. There are now four different districts within that redevelopment area, and that's what the different colors represent on the map. Primarily centered around the commercial corridors and where most small businesses are located. The Myra districts are about 10% of all of Merritt Island, just to give you an idea that it is concentrating on the economic engine. And because there is no city government, Myra, along with the board of directors that are made up of small business owners, they really provide the leadership for economic redevelopment for Merritt Island. There is no one else. There's no city hall. There's no mayor. There's no city manager. Merritt Island, when I started this thing, you know, I said, "Well, let's see how the numbers fall out." I don't know how, you know, I'll do, I'll take a look and I'll share with you what I found. And it is, from my standpoint, it was interesting. This area, unincorporated area of the county, is 6% of the county's area, 8% of the population. It has about 8% of the companies that are almost exclusively small businesses. Yet, when we look at the return to the county from that economic engine, this 6% of the county's area generates 10% of the sales tax revenue for the county and 9% of the property tax base for the county. And let me explain that from now on, we didn't want to cherry pick one or two years, so I chose to take a look at the last decade. And all of the numbers that you'll be seeing are the cumulative totals of costs and benefits tax base over 10 years. So, for example, sales tax for the last 10 years contributed by Merritt Island is $421 million. Property tax, $541 million. So, really, over the last 10 years, it's about a billion dollars' worth of contribution to the county as a result of the economic and property value activity in Merritt Island. So, it's about $100 million a year is another way to think about it. Now, these numbers, with economic conditions, the increment goes up and down as property values change, so it's kind of a wavy line. But in the look back that I had, I thought it was interesting that the percentages remained stable, right around 10% and 9%, even as the economy went up and down. This continued to be a key part of the tax contribution for the county. To put this in perspective relative to the other communities, because again, this is different. This is an unincorporated area. When we look at property tax over a period of time, this unincorporated area ranks third if it were a city, you know, in terms of the amount of property tax contribution to the county. Melbourne is much larger. Palm Bay is larger. And then Merritt Island and other cities come below that. And about, another interesting thing is about 91% of the county property tax comes from CRA-supported communities. Of that remaining 9%, the vast majority of that 9% comes from Merritt Island, which is part of that unincorporated area. And there's a little, small, you know, some other smaller cities are in there, too. So, again, this is an important piece, an important component of the county's economy. Now, looking at sales tax, it's even bigger. It's the 10% of the contribution to the county at $421 million over 10 years. Again, it ranks third. Cocoa actually has a little bit more sales tax contribution. That makes sense, given the large amount of tourism there. But Merritt Island still ranks third. And looking at sales tax, about 93% of the county's sales tax revenue comes from CRA-supported communities, with again, most of the remaining 7% coming from Merritt Island. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about what Myra does. So, in the absence of a municipal government, Myra, you know, plays that role in terms of leadership for economic development in this very important commercial corridor. It also is key to developing these public-private partnerships primarily with small businesses to get things done. Over the years, we'll give you a few examples as others have. You'll see that the community redevelopment agency, Myra, has been able to exercise more flexibility than the county would otherwise have in financing various projects by leveraging different pools of money, the color of money, if you will. And certainly, at their core of their mission is to conceive, develop, finance, and then build projects associated with redevelopment for this area. Longer term, they are involved in constantly renewing a long-term plan. They do economic analysis, which is why I'm here. They just want to make sure that they're getting the biggest bang for the buck as they move forward in the future as well. All the CRAs, I'm sure, I think the stories are, this is a long-term activity. This is not something that we want to be turning off and on. It takes time to do these things, and we need to be able to respond to demographic changes or economic upturns and downturns over which we have no control. So, it is a long-term activity that has to be dedicated. This is another remarkable number, and some of the other CRA shared it with you, but over the last 10 years, Myra has reinvested 97% of the funds it's received in tax increment funding into projects. And it's interesting, if you look at, you know, other big brand names of very well-led organizations, the Red Cross is at 91% and the Salvation Army is at 82%. So, Myra's doing fairly well, you know, with regard to minimizing the overhead for its activities. And these are the various categories of spending. And for the last 10 years, Myra has not incurred debt. There's no debt service during that timeframe. I'll just walk you through some quick examples of how this money was spent in Merritt Island. And if you have any questions, we have the right people here. I live in Satellite Beach, and it's been a pleasure to get to know Merritt Island during this study. I learned a lot. Myra, most of the $10.7 million that was spent over the last 10 years was 100% fully-funded projects that Myra executed in their districts. And those are primarily in some of these areas that you see, you know, sewers, street scapes, and gateways for small businesses. Another category of the way they do financing on projects is where they were able to leverage grants. And within that, there are two types of activities. They were able to leverage over the last 10 years an additional $1.2 million on top of the total $11 million in TIF funding that they received during that 10-year timeframe. So, it was, you know, on the order of 10% more of a bump. And that was applied to, for example, the Boardwalk projects. And that was money that basically flowed through Myra's books. But in addition to that, up at the top, on the left, there's a project called Griffiths Landing, and on the right is the Veteran Center, which is a huge landmark park project that I'll talk about. But the Griffiths Landing acquisition, which was done, I believe, in 2010 or so, that basically brought in $2.8 million worth of property value and redevelopment into the county. The Myra net investment in that project was $385,000. So, again, it's a seven-to-one cost-benefit, you know, benefit-to-cost ratio, and that did not flow through Myra's books. So, it's not, it's in addition to the $1.2 million number. So, it was additional $2.4 million in outside funding that they were able to leverage, having Myra involved in that project, to bring in $2.4 million additional into the county. The Veteran Center project, which is the one on the right, was also able to, I looked at how that project was financed, and there were many, many colors of money involved to pull that whole thing together. That was a, that was a big project. Myra had to contribute money, I believe, for some of the parking areas and some other things that were not in anyone else's pool of money that could be financed to get this done. It was a lot of work. It's a wonderful project. Another thing that I found very interesting is this concept of a regional stormwater facility. There are a couple of large retention basins that were built as part of that project, and, you know, they're very aesthetic. You know, it's a great place to visit. There are jogging trails around there. But the key role for these water bodies is a massive stormwater filtration capacity that is now a regional asset for all of the businesses in that Myra district. So, they no longer have to allocate a portion of their own property for a, you know, detention pond. It allows for expansion by centralizing it in this facility, and it also allows for a dedicated maintenance to make sure that it's being filtered properly. There are a lot of advantages to that. And there are, you know, I believe we're going to show some future plans for that landmark park. It's a great attraction for visitors as well as a great resource for residents. And the last category, one more category, just like some other people mentioned, Myra over the years has piggybacked on top of FDOD projects that were implemented primarily for safety. And by jumping onto those projects, they were able to do redevelopment activities and improvements for, you know, things like sidewalks, masked arms at intersections, roadway, scenery, at much less money than it would have cost, you know, would have been spent had those been done on a standalone basis. So, that's another type of leverage, and that was $718,000 over 10 years. Now, the last category of projects are, as you've heard before, the small business grants for commercial facade improvements. And they have a 50-fifty matching program up to a cap. It's interesting that over the last 10 years, Myra invested $788,000 in these sorts of matching funds, but it generated $4.4 million worth of total project value and renovation. That's because the businesses invested a lot more than their cap. They kept, you know, improving even beyond that. But Myra, you know, Myra's participation, as someone else mentioned, was key to getting these things done. So, this is a six-to-one leverage. And I keep hearing the other, the other CRAs use that term, you know, leverage, leverage, leverage. This is financially, you know, CRA seem to be performing very well with regard to bringing in additional funding to get things done in their areas. Another key metric that is good for community redevelopment agencies to assess from time to time is take a look at the ratio of sales tax to property tax in an area where there's a CRA. In Merritt Island's case, it's 78%. That gives you an indicator of how much commercial activity there is in an area relative to the value of real estate in that area. So, and this is kind of 78%. I looked at some of the other cities, major cities. It's kind of in the middle of the pack. So, I think there's still some upside here, and you'll see some of the ideas that they have for improving this even beyond what it is today. Let's talk about, this is the wrap-up graphic. We wanted to use this graphic to talk to the role of this economic engine, which is sustained by Myra, by the Community Redevelopment Agency, its role in generating revenue, generating money for the county. Over the last 10 years, property tax plus sales tax, just those two numbers, totaled some $962 million associated with Merritt Island. If we take out, for the sake of argument, if we subtract the total $11 million given to Myra over that same 10-year period, we're left with a net contribution to the county of still almost, almost a billion dollars over that timeframe. So, if we think about it in terms of a cost-benefit ratio, it's a very large positive ratio, 86-to-1 benefit-to-cost ratio. And the way, you know, the way a business would look at this is as a risk assessment. You know, does it make sense for me to pull back on some Myra funding? And if so, what's the break-even point? Well, you know, if we're looking at, if we're looking at basically $100 million a year in combined tax revenue, and say you remove all of the redevelopment activity, if just, if that contribution drops by just 10%, you're out $90 million. So, you know, it gives you a good feeling that this is a high-value sort of investment. This is a prudent investment on the part of the county with very, very low risk. You know, and the idea of, the $962 million is basically an economic engine. No engine can keep running without maintenance. And I understand there's a sunset period for these things, and, you know, you'll have to decide what to do when that day comes. But no engine is going to keep running without maintenance. Myra provides that maintenance for this unincorporated area of Brevard County. There's no one else there to do that. So, a combination of an executive director that is a county employee that knows how to get things done in the county, knows how to follow the right procedures, and this support and leverage provided by a volunteer board of small business owners has been highly effective, you know, for this unincorporated area of Merritt Island. And just to wrap things up, Myra is basically, if you look at that contribution, you know, almost a billion dollars over 10 years, Myra is basically an asset for all of Brevard County because of that tax base that it brings into the county. It's focused on improving these commercial districts, 10% of Merritt Island, but it results in almost a billion dollars' worth of contribution over 10 years to the county. So, it's really about, it's really an asset for the county. Myra is an asset for the county that's benefiting the county. It provides leadership in sustaining the economic engine. And again, 6% of the county's area, 8% of the county's population, 8% of the county's companies are located in Merritt Island. But Merritt Island generates 9% of the county's property tax and 10% of the county's sales tax. You know, it's important to keep that going. It's important to continue to look at ways of maybe even growing that even beyond what it is today. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions right now? Wendy? And now she's going to talk about the future, which is good.
Thank you, Al. So, now I'd like to share with you just a few of the exciting projects that the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency is currently undertaking. This is, so, this is Veterans Memorial Stormwater Project. And it started out with a project that was going to be 600 homes that were already permitted, and Pulte Homes had purchased it for over $6 million. So, the Great Recession halted those plans, and it went up for sale. And so, the county negotiated a $2.5 million purchase price, and the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency purchased it. So, the project had multiple funding sources. In addition to Myra, District 2 stormwater fees through Natural Resources were used to design and construct the 52-acre lake. And the local option gas tax was used to, the local gas tax was used to replace aging pipes and new pipes to direct water from an area that had no stormwater system in place because it was built prior to stormwater regulations. So, impact fees were used to build a sidewalk in a newly-piped ditch resolving a safety problem on Fortenberry Road, which abuts the lake. And of course, we've already been doing tests on the water in this area since construction of the stormwater system, and it significantly improved this section of the lagoon. In addition to all those benefits, the county obtained an $800,000 state grant that allowed for access and park amenities and the expansion of Veterans Memorial Center. And now we have Veterans Memorial Park. And because of the investment that we've been making, the veterans were awarded a $1.5 million grant from the state of Florida for their museum expansion. Many, many, many Merritt Island companies donated sweat equity in thousands of hours. Veterans and volunteers worked very hard to make the museum expansion a reality. So, Myra was able to spearhead all of this during a time where we had the worst recession in Merritt Island's history. But when opportunities like this arise, Myra works as a team with Brevard County and other funding sources, and we are ready. So, you're familiar with State Road 520 in Merritt Island and all of our businesses along State Road 520. And most of Merritt Island, most of Merritt Square Mall, in addition to those businesses along 520, were draining directly into the Indian River Lagoon. So, if any of these projects wanted to redevelop, it was going to be extremely difficult and expensive to meet today's standards. Today, these businesses have the opportunity to redevelop, fully utilizing their property because this regional stormwater lake is now a utility. So, now they can fully develop their entire site and meet today's building standards, which in turn increases the tax base. Why? Well, you know, if instead of having 20% of your property used as a retention pond, you can now increase the size of your footprint by that same percentage. And now you have more retail space, more seats in your restaurant, more sales, which generate more taxes for Brevard County. So, one of the opportunities that Merritt Square Mall would have is that they could fill in their small stormwater ponds that they currently have and pay the county to utilize our utility as their stormwater treatment. So, now you would have six acres of developable property along Fortenberry Road. So, one thing that the Myra board recognizes is that Merritt Island does not have a downtown area. So, these are some renderings that were done showing the mall's potential for redevelopment. So, this is Friday's, right at the entrance here, where Friday's currently is. And you see that a road has been built going through Merritt Square Mall back to our retention pond, lake, 52-acre lake. And so, the blue are your big-box stores and the brown are your smaller businesses. And back here shows us six acres of developable property that we now could have along Fortenberry Road because the very small ponds that the mall has has been filled in, and now they're using, you know, our 52-acre lake, our utility, our stormwater utility for their stormwater needs. So, this is just one idea of how Merritt Island could redevelop, this mall could redevelop in the future. We are currently making additional investments here behind the mall. We are doing that because we're trying to keep the mall viable. It's a large tax generator and a huge economic engine, not only for Merritt Island but for all of Brevard County. And one way we can do that is to show our commitment to redevelopment opportunities. And so, this area is one of our main areas of focus. But back to the present, south of the mall, which is the So these are some renderings that were done showing the mall's potential for redevelopment. So this is Friday's, right at the entrance here, where Friday's currently is. And you see that a road has been built going through Merritt Square Mall, back to our retention pond, lake, 52-acre lake. And so the blue are your big-box stores, and the brown are your smaller businesses. And back here shows us six acres of developable property that we now could have along Fortinberry Road because the very small ponds that the mall has has been filled in, and now they're using, you know, our 52-acre lake, our utility, our stormwater utility for their stormwater needs. So this is just one idea of how Merritt Island could redevelop, this mall could redevelop in the future. We are currently making additional investments here behind the mall. We are doing that because we're trying to keep the mall viable. It's a large tax generator and a huge economic engine, not only for Merritt Island, but for all of Brevard County. And one way we can do that is to show our commitment to redevelopment opportunities. And so this area is one of our main areas of focus. But back to the present, south of the mall, just to show you a couple more, this is just a couple more renderings that we have done. You know, here is looking straight back down this road, and you'll see in the back, you know, is that retention pond, you know, development around that area. Back to the present, so south of the mall is a project we're currently working on, and we are, have funding to pipe the Cone Road ditch with the local option gas tax. We're adding a sidewalk for safety because currently the Cone Road ditch goes, currently the Cone Road ditch goes into a lagoon. But we're going to redirect that water to the alum pond, including a denitrification system, which was paid for by a grant that Myra applied for. And so Myra was able to piggyback on what the county was already doing, and now will be facilitating lateral construction work to bring sewer connections to an industrial park that's adjacent to the Merritt Island Airport. So currently, those industrial businesses are on a 60-year-old septic tank, and there's very, very limited opportunity to replace them because they don't meet current regulations. And so it really limits the type of businesses you can have because you only have one toilet, literally. So this project is the beginning of the redevelopment of the industrial park. So there's many redevelopment opportunities, business expansion, and the 60-year-old septic tanks will no longer be leaking into the lagoon. So these are just several projects, and there's others, but all are long-term commitments, and they take years to develop and fund. And Myra is debt-free, and we are pay-as-you-go. So having partnerships with other agencies like the state, the veterans, the Indian River Lagoon Council, business owners, the support of our county commission, we want to continue working on these projects that are so vital to the economy of Merritt Island. And we want to continue to increase our tax base. So this is an unincorporated CRA. You've seen the numbers that Mr. Vasquez provided. Merritt Island is 6% of Brevard's area, 8% of its population, but it's 9% of its property tax and 10% of its sales tax. So Merritt Island's success means success for all of Brevard. So last you've seen that Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency has an 86 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. Although I'd like to take credit for it, this is not a formula manufactured by Myra. You know, this is a formula used by economists worldwide. So according to the Economic Impact Study from Close Waters, if you take away the TIF funding from Myra, chances are you would not have more money to pave roads, you would have less. And at the end of the day, the 86 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio really leaves no doubt the success of the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency is also your success as a county. So we thank you very much for your partnership, and between the commissioner and Al, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have. Thank you so much.
Any questions from the board? No? Thank you for your presentation. All right. We finished all of our presentations, and I have to tell you, from my perspective, it's been very informative, and I thank all the folks that were here for their hard work. I want to offer a special thank you to Courtney for spearheading this effort, and for Jim McKnight for honoring his word and postponing the construction of their parking garage until we had this meeting. So Mayor McCormick had something that she wanted to say before we move forward.
No, I just corrected the statement made by Mr. Tobias far as the audit report was provided. Stockton got me the correct numbers, and I just wanted to make sure that I corrected that for the record, that we did some complete, or completed audit, which was accepted by the county. And I will thank Stockton for providing me with that information.
Okay. So now we have speaker's cards. State your name and your address, please.
Thank you very much. Don Weaver, 3060 North Atlantic Avenue, Cocoa Beach, Florida. I don't live on Merritt Island, but I work there, and my paycheck is pretty meager. As a volunteer representing 70,000 veterans, I stood here before you two years ago, more than two years ago, to the commission and asked you to envision a partnership. You've heard it explained with CRAs today in all kinds of ways, but this veterans thing and what Myra and also many other people have done is very special. I'll just add to what you've heard. TDC, the port, Myra, the state, $1.5 million, the county, $1.1 million for the park, and $300,000 from citizens and businesses that we raised during the two years to get where we are today. Many of you have not yet visited that place. We do take names and numbers in the military. We will check. Please come and see it. You can't vote and decide on things that you don't see. Please. And it is very viewable now, and the potential is there now. We not only support what Myra talked about and what we want to do, but we also want to remind you that we, as citizens of this county and as veterans of our country, are invested in Brevard because we are welcomed in Brevard. Last week, we, this week, we had 10 days of the first month, 1,700 visitors to the new Military Museum. 1,700 visitors. And it's hardly the word, it's hardly getting out there yet. We have received more comments and more interest in that park. We had 200 Boy Scouts and their leaders two weekends ago that learned a lot, toured the museum, and had a wonderful time in that park. This is a county resource. It's in the central of the county, central part of the county. As veterans, Bill Kowalski, others, and I, we'll promise you, we'll make it work, we'll make it a great place to visit. Just keep giving us those resources and caring about what we're trying to do as a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Allison. I live at 700 Atlantic Drive, Satellite Beach. My wife and I are the couple that own the plaza that Courtney had on the Shell Street renovation, which the Shell Street renovation also brought sewer line down the street to all the houses on the east side on the ocean that were on septic tanks. So that was a plus that it did. It enticed me to do the remodel work and the additions for the outside dining for the restaurants. And a year and a half later, the restaurants have nearly tripled their business, and each one of them has added about 18 to 20 jobs. I consider that a win, and I think it was a real success story there. That's it.
John T.
All things relating to the resolutions, Mr. Chair.
My name is Deanna Shomar. I live on Merritt Island. And I'm kind of probably alone in this room with my feelings about CRAs. I really feel like it isn't right for a government to use its powers of taxation to tax individuals to turn around then and give that money to private businesses. I kind of wish you had a private redevelopment agency, and maybe I could apply for a grant to pay for half of my new seawall that I have to purchase. I was a private business owner for many years. Nobody else painted my building. Nobody else painted our driveway. If a business is successful, I would think that they could provide those things themselves. When I asked the Freedom of Information, there are like 22 CRAs in Brevard County total, including the North Brevard Economic Redevelopment Organization. And I think last year, they sucked up $8 million. Now, that's $8 million that could have been in the general fund. And I know it's going to happen. You're going to come then to me, a private property owner, who also, by the way, owns some apartments, and you're going to raise the taxes on all of that, just like you've done every year. Every year, we've had a property tax increase. Our tenants complain when we raise the rent. Well, we're not sort of in the business to have apartments to lose money. We can't afford to do that. So when they get their rent increased, and it can be hard for them, you know, they want to know why. And I explain to them that if they want to understand, then they need to start coming to some of the county commissioner meetings and voicing their concerns about why their rent has to go up every year. I can appreciate that the cities like all these partnerships with getting money out of the pot to come back to the city and then doing things that the city wants to do. But if there's such good projects, why doesn't the city fund them themselves? I realize that you all just think this is all really, really wonderful, but I see it as the county entering the private property sector, or the private business sector, as them being involved in private businesses, as them deciding which businesses are going to be successful and which ones are not. Which ones to help and which ones, what, I ran out of time?
No, you have 30 seconds.
Oh, all right. All right. Well, I just, there's nobody else here to speak to the other side of it, clearly, I guess. But I just want you to know that there is another side, and that I'm tired of all the property tax increases. I think that the county needs to look at every item on that budget, and they need to consider every dollar they give out before they raise taxes yet again. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Beau Platt, 844 West Whitmire Drive in Melbourne. And I grew up in the O'Gally part of Melbourne in the '50s and '60s, so I'm one of the few people that are old enough to have enjoyed the downtown O'Gally and Melbourne areas during, I guess, the twilight of their initial viability. But I left in '70 and ended up out in Austin, Texas. And I became kind of an ad hoc expert on blight. And the way that happened, I worked for the State Health and Human Services Commission, and we had 300 offices across the state, serving about 3 million impoverished Texans, providing eligibility services for things like food stamps, Medicaid, women's health services, refugee services. And it became apparent to me that in communities that invested in their, in themselves, jobs came, lease rates rose, and it became tough for us because, first of all, our customers left those areas, and our lease costs increased. So we generally closed those offices. And those communities that didn't invest, the opposite happened. The infrastructure started crumbling, jobs left, employment decreased, and we became able to lease offices in those areas because the rent rates went way down and became affordable to us. And we operated on a shoestring budget so that while it was good for us, it was bad for the community. So during my whole time in Austin, though, I wanted to return to this area because I loved it as a kid. And so I got back here about four years ago, and I enjoy going to the festivals at Pelican Park. My wife and I have season tickets to the Playhouse down in Cocoa Village. We go to the, we go to the first Friday events in downtown Melbourne and O'Gally. And, you know, I'm happy to pay a little bit of extra taxes. I don't think it's much in my case. I've got a pretty nice house, but I don't think what I pay that goes for this is an appreciable amount. And it really has a significant impact on my quality of life, and, you know, I'm happy to support the CRAs. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Dave Passley, Melbourne Beach, Florida. No new face to the members of this committee. There's a young lady that was kind of opposed to CRAs. I'm really opposed to CRAs. And to speak it brief, my property values have doubled. I've been living in the same house now for 16, 17 years. I live on A1A. There's not a damn thing that anyone's done for me. They haven't painted my house, they haven't put a new roof on. My property values went up, but we got all the CRAs claiming that for the small amount of money that they've been given, that they've been driving property values up. Folks, there's something wrong with this picture. That model doesn't work. Secondly, I don't know much, but I will tell you one thing. I am a student of CR, or Florida Statute 163, Part III. I read that thing from top to bottom probably three or four times a year. I don't understand how we can take CRA money and pay for sewer lines. We're already being taxed from the state and from the county for those utilities. And the same with a parking garage. I don't understand how we take CRA funds and pay for a municipal building. Doesn't make sense to me. Somebody maybe answered, but I don't get it. Okay. We talked about using money for local option gas tax to pay for a water, stormwater recovery facility? Well, we got a problem with this in this county. Since 19207, 208, basically, we've crippled any kind of road maintenance. The CRAs have gotten their money, the roads have not. Then we took money from the roads and we gave it to the CRAs. That's a simple picture. Now we're in a situation where roads need money. Let's take it from the CRAs and give it to the roads. I don't care what kind of flower pot or garbage can you've got sitting alongside the road. If there's a pothole behind it, beside it, it's not going to do much for you. We're coming into town and looking for a place to relocate your business. If you're driving, having to pay attention to what's going on in the road, you're not going to be paying attention a whole lot to the buildings. One other point, there were two presentations.
30 seconds. Dave, 30 seconds.
Two presentations that talked about affordable housing. And congratulations. It's the first time I've heard anyone talk about affordable housing or elder care, elderly housing with CRAs. That's one of your missions. You ought to be spending money and looking at opportunities for low-income housing. We've had two, in the Budget Workshop, we had two different organizations come to us looking for money for affordable housing. And we've also got a group, I never heard of them before the other day.
Time's up, Dave.
Looking for money for tiny houses for veterans. Thank you.
Hi there. Kim Smith, 5390 Judson Road, Merritt Island. Merritt Islanders are grateful to commissioners for the work that you do for us. We really are. What I, I have like, what, 20 seconds to do this? Is that right?
You have three minutes.
Okay. I don't have, I don't have time to be here. I really don't have time to be here today. I'm supposed to be working on something, I'm supposed to be doing a job in Cape Canaveral. I don't want to speak, but when I heard about this, I wanted to come and talk about what was fair. You've heard the figures of the income that unincorporated Merritt Island brings into the Brevard County coffers. Like other communities for some time, Merritt Island has been working to revitalize. And income to Brevard County has gone up from Merritt Island due to Myra. One beauty of Myra is that they can go out and get grants that Brevard County is not allowed to do. So they, instead of using county tax dollars, they're getting dollars from outside the county. Also, they're operating with zero debt, as you've heard. They pay a lot per capita into the Brevard County coffers, and that was, those were figures that have been presented to you folks. It's fair that some of these funds come back, like Myra, to Merritt Island. The figures quoted, $11 million over 10 years has been in the Myra budget. What has come out from Merritt Island back to the county? $951 million. Very good return on investment. It's not really fair, or, and it's not economically smart, to pull funding from Myra. So we'd like to see you continue to support the CRAs. Thank you.
Andy Barber. Andy Barber.
My bottom is stiff. I'm Andy Barber, I'm from Newfoundland Harbor Drive, Merritt Island, and I wrote this this morning, and it sounded very good this morning, but I'm going to read it real quick to you. Merritt Island is a very unique place. You all probably know that we are the largest unincorporated urban area in the state. In fact, when I was in elementary school here in Merritt Island, we were the fastest-growing county in the nation and also the trout capital. But we're no longer, there you go, no longer that. Merritt Island is the second and third-largest contributor to the county budget and sales and property tax. We just heard that. We are Brevard County's cash cow. I mean, the numbers that show, I'd like to see the numbers of how much Merritt Island, unincorporated Merritt Island contributes to the county versus the rest of the unincorporated area. We fund the county. Us in Vieira literally fund the county, in my view. Merritt Island deserves much more than just care and feeding from the county. You commissioners are our local government, and I believe you were sworn to look after our interests to the best of your abilities. Do you wake up every morning wondering what can you do for Merritt Island? Well, I know the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency does. I am a board member, have been for a long time. Without Myra, I would wonder who would carry the banner for future development and redevelopment in our aging commercial district? Who's going to encourage mom and pop to redo their businesses? Who is going to inspire the mall to redevelop? Who out there, who is out there going to take the extra step to make our community beautiful and loved? Will you, the county commission, take the individual steps necessary to make our island a better place to live and raise a family? Why in the world would you propose an ordinance to shut down our most important and impactful organization run by volunteer board members composed of some of the brightest and most concerning residents that you could find anywhere? That would include me. Why? Myra works for you. We work for you. We don't worry about what happens in Titusville or Grant. You have to do that. Did I turn this off? Nope. And if you will support Myra, we will continue to be there working for you every day.
Richard Charbonneau.
Richard Charbonneau, the, from the blighted community of Satellite Beach, taxpayer of 10 properties. I've got a question that just came up for Stockton. Did you bring me a chair over there because I'm a handicapper? Or did you bring me a chair over because you didn't want me to break the county's table? I'm asking you a question.
I brought you a chair because you were sitting where people were trying to get their coffee.
Oh, so you weren't helping me out because I was handicapped? You didn't want me to break the county table? Okay, thank you. I've cleared that up.
Mr. Charbonneau, do you have something to say to the board?
No, I just wanted to ask the Stockton question that came up. I listened to the presentation of Courtney Barker from Satellite Beach, and she left out a couple, a little key factor. You know, Satellite Beach misused $5 million of CRA money, and Scott Ellis caught them. And they had to pay back 1.8 million. There became a little bit of a rock-throwing match between Scott and Courtney Barker, and Scott doesn't lose very often. So Scott kind of won, and he, they had to pay back the 1.8 million. But then the commissioners, in their infinite wisdom, let them pay back the 1.8 million with their own money. They call it an interlocal agreement. I never heard of anything so silly in my life. Moving on to Mike McNeese. I went to a Melbourne City meeting, and Scott Ellis, myself, and Peter Fuskes, we were really the outsiders. They were talking about CRAs there. And Mike McNeese, somebody asked him what the definition of a blighted community was, and he didn't really know what a blighted community was, he said. But he did say, "I don't know what it is, but quote-unquote, blight is whatever I say it is." That's interesting. And then he went on to say to Scott that, Scott asked him about 10 questions about CRAs, and he said that it wasn't his job to answer questions from Scott. It was only his job to answer questions from the county, or, I mean, the city.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. My family's been here for 5,000 years, not 150 years, just so you know. And, oh, as far as blighted communities go, I don't know what the definition of blight is either, but the black community makes up 9% of the population-
Your time is up.
...and 55% of the violent crime, and that comes from the FBI.
Camille Hadley.
Thanks for the help, by the way.
Good evening or good afternoon, officials. Chair, I'd like to ask, we both have a card. This is Lynn Carey. I'd like to ask if she could speak with me. Would that be okay?
You've got three minutes.
Okay.
Not six.
I'm Lynn Brockwell-Carry, Director at Brevard Neighborhood Development Coalition, and we are a community developer nonprofit. And I'm here in capacity with Camille because we are working on the Evans Center, which is a project in the Bayfront Community Redevelopment area. It is going to be a critical project, a cornerstone project, for the neighborhood of Powell and Driscoll Heights subdivisions in northeast Palm Bay, southeast Melbourne area. We're going to bring back to that community a market, because it is a USDA-designated food desert. We're going to employ teenagers in that community. We will have a Brevard Health Alliance clinic as well as classroom space. So this is a great example of how a small amount of money is going to be leveraged in a really significant way and have significant public benefits. Camille can share much more directly about the social public benefits.
Camille Hadley, as you mentioned before. I live on Washington Street in the Powell-Driscoll subdivision, northeast Palm Bay. Thanks to the funds that were given by the CRA to the Evans Center project, not only will I be a beneficiary of what that supermarket will bring to the community, but it also created a job for me. I lost my job last year in September, and because of the time that I spent volunteering on this project, they decided to actually hire me to manage their farmer's market, which now provides immediate access to low-cost, fresh, organic produce to the people that live in this community. I think that although you are planning a budget, it is important to think about the investment in the people that the CRAs actually create. As a member and a resident of this community, the Powell-Driscoll subdivision where this Evans Center is being built, it's important to me specifically because I have children that live in this area. And I know that a huge thing for Brevard County as a whole is that our kids are hungry. Our kids are hungry. There are 80% of the kids in my community are on the free and reduced lunch program, which means that when they go home, that breakfast and lunch that they get in school is sometimes the only meal that they get for the day. This project will provide access to them to have food security in this community. It provides access to me, a mother of three, that is working part-time to be able to provide food to my kids that is healthy, healthy food, not preservative, filled, but locally grown, healthy food. And I think that even though it is important to think about the investment that you make when you're talking about the financial aspect of this project, I think it's even more important to think about the investment that it makes in the people that live in these communities that the CRA serves, me being one of them. This will have a major, this building and the money that was given to this project has a major impact on the quality of life for me and my neighbors. And I think that that is really, really an important thing to consider moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, let's move into, we have a resolution by Commissioner John Tobia. Commissioner, would you like to introduce your resolution?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. And I thought I would never be on the same page when it came to CRAs with one Courtney Barker, but looking at the recommendations, and I had not seen that project before, but looking at the end, the recommendations, I think it asked for us, and I gave my copy away, so you can check that I'm, you know, not too liberally paraphrasing this stuff, but all, all these CRAs are different. They come in and they use the resources in a different fashion. Some have decided to go and seek debt, others have not. Some have been around a little while, others have been around a long time. So I had a bunch of resolutions ready, but the resolution that ended up on the agenda, I think, very closely mirrors the recommendation made by Ms. Barker. The resolution is very simple. I think that's a key here. It's half a page, and all it says is, now, the first thing we need to understand, basically, I think we can categorize these CRAs into four distinct items. We have the county one, which is Merritt Island. We have West Melbourne, which is a joint partnership. We have the three that predate the charter. That would be Cocoa Downtown, Melbourne Downtown, and Titusville Downtown. So I think we should handle the West Melbourne. We can handle that on an individual basis. We certainly can handle the Merritt Island on the individual basis, but two-thirds of them, you know, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Diamond, Cocoa US1, Cocoa Beach, Melbourne Babcock, Melbourne Old O'Gally, Palm Bay Downtown, Palm Bay Shores, Rockledge, and Satellite Beach. Couple of, one of these, as Courtney mentioned, Satellite Beach being that one, has an interlocal agreement. I think that we need to work in conjunction with our city partners, and that's why, for not only budgeting on our sake, but theirs as well. So my resolution, I probably spent more time explaining it than what I would have done reading it, but all it does is require those 10, and again, there's nothing we can do about the bottom three, we can handle the top two when it comes to ordinance, but those 10 to come to us as a board, where we can sit down, look at them individually, look at their goals, look at how close they've gotten, whether, you know, they need more work, and deal with that on a one-on-one basis. Take the time. I only had the opportunity, because we've been so heavy in budgets, to spend a couple days looking at the budgets here. Certainly brought up a lot of questions. There were some things that were very specific, others not. So that's a long way of saying that all my ordinance does is require those 10 CRAs within the next 60 days, and I did that for budgeting period. If we need 90 days and that works for them as well as us when it comes to budgets, I'm more willing, I'm willing to do that, to sit down and enter into interlocal agreements, so we can be all on the same page. So we don't keep on throwing, you know, CRA resolutions, you know, at the last minute on the agenda, so we can call them up one by one, or two at a meeting, as it may be, sit down, come to some agreement, and put the issue behind us, whether that means leave them alone, or whether that means deal with them when it comes to excess funding. But I think it would be, I don't think it would be fair to have a resolution that would immediately do away with any, or give others a pass for one reason or another. So my, I don't know that it would have the support of any of the CRAs out there, but it certainly mirrored the recommendation made by Ms. Barker. And so that's, that's all the, that's all the resolution does, is require those 10 CRAs to come to the board over the next 60 days, so we can enter into an interlocal agreement that benefit the citizens of Brevard.
I'm a little confused here, because the resolution I have in front of me says a whole lot more than what you just said.
Are you?
I'm looking at resolution number 2017, and it doesn't have any other number after it.
They don't. So the first page is all the whereas, there's only four, there's only four points?
I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, whereas is on the first page.
No, 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 page 2.
Page 2, okay.
It should only have four.
Mr. Smith, if possible, to have John come up and talk to us a few minutes.
Sure.
I don't, probably with number 2 on there, I'm probably not sweating too much over it. Number 3 kind of concerns me a bit. I don't know that, I'm ready to say no more CRAs, because there might be some places in the future that would be appropriate.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I, you know, I glossed over 3. I thought, I thought we were there. Yes, this says, no more CRAs, and I would be willing to change that to say no more CRAs unless they were enter into an interlocal agreement. But, you know, with the amount of time and pulling 2 and having 1, I just wanted to keep it as simple as possible. So yes, well, it's the chairman's decision to, he wants to call.
Let me think on that. John?
Yes, John Dicange, City Manager of City of Cocoa. Yes, I think all the cities and the CRAs have indicated willingness to come forward and do ILAs. I don't believe that 60 days is an adequate timeframe. I think we're both in the middle of our budget process. You're going through a transition, you know, with your executive management. And then the other kind of wrinkle here is the resolution, if a CRA was not to do this, I just want to put this out here, Section 163, 387, 2B, provides a penalty for the county. If you do not provide the TIF by January 1st, there's a 5% penalty, and then it's a 1% every month thereafter. So that might be something that needed to work out. I mean, it could be waived by the parties in the interest of, you know, working together. But the other item that would be a concern, specifically for the US1 CRA that has debt service, is it's in violation of our resolution that the county adopted, 97-160, Section 3B1, that would impair our ability to fulfill our contractual obligations. So I appreciate and I very much value, and I think everybody does, the opportunity to come forward. I just, look how long it took us to get here. Is 60 days reasonable to meet with everybody? And I know, like, next week, we're supposed to be able to sit down and meet with you and do a tour.
Can I get, can I get it, John? Can I, is that a, can I get a?
Sure, yeah.
Can I get an explanation how meeting with, coming before the board to enter into an interlocal agreement at all would impair your ability to, because that wouldn't be my intent with, with entering into an interlocal agreement, but how would this resolution directly, and maybe we want to turn to the attorney that drafted this and see how this would, resolution would impair or infringe upon any statute?
Not, one, non-attorney, but two-
Well, I have one right here.
I know, but it says unless, just plain language, unless the CRA and the municipality have executed an interlocal agreement. So if we don't do that within, you know, within timeframe, you're saying that you're going to withhold the funds. And then it would naturally lead to a corso-
Oh, so your argument is it would infringe on it if we set a timeline and you didn't want to meet with us within those 60 days?
I'm not saying we don't want to meet with you. We do want to meet with you. But I'm just, I don't know if that timeline is realistic. And I'm just pointing out that, that within this, if, say, you have a CRA that doesn't do that, you could have some legal issues.
We would be sure to schedule, but let me ask you, in your opinion, how many days are, how many days are you looking at to prepare in order to get this done? Because we're entering the budget season-
Correct.
-and I know that you want some, I've spoken with a couple of city council members that said, "Let's deal with this one way or another, but let's do it in expeditious fashion." Because I know we're looking at our budget. I imagine you're doing the same. What would allow us, what would, not us, what would allow you time, regardless of whether we're going through executive management change or not? What would provide you with ample time to be ready to meet with us?
Let me just preface, one, the TIF payment's not due to the CRAs until January 1st. So there's ample time between now and then, you know, for the mechanism to- So there's ample time between now and then, you know, for the mechanism to work. Two, I have two CRAs that are affected. I think, in all fairness to those boards, and then to my city council, I think there needs to be a joint workshop among ourselves to determine, because we got to negotiate with staff, and then bring it back to the board to work with you all. I can't, I can't commit, in all fairness, on behalf of my council and the two CRA boards-
So, so to understand, to understand this, I asked for a day, like, 90 days, 120 days, three and a half years, you know, and I understand how, I understand how there's no, I understand how there's no speed.
Mr. Tobias, rather than just ask one of, one of the representatives, I think it would, we're in no hurry here. I think it would be incumbent upon us to get feedback from all of the CRAs that we're talking with. And if you folks, and this is my opinion, so the board can back me up or not, my opinion is that we've worked with you folks, one-on-one, good faith. I'm sure we'll continue to work in good faith. So if you go back to your boards and you tell, you talk to your boards and you come up with a number that works for you, I'm sure it'll work for us. So if you come back and say, we can do it by September 1st, or we can do it by July 1st, whatever, I would leave that up to you folks. You're the ones that are going to have to craft these things, and we're going to have to approve them. And I want to, I want to tell you that we're very, very thankful that all of you are in agreement that this is something that we need to work together on. My biggest fear, excuse me, when I proposed this, was that we were going to just talk past each other. You were going to tell us what we had to do, and we were going to tell you what you had to do, and nobody was going to come to any agreement. So I'm very, very encouraged that we have commissioners and folks from the, from the cities that are willing to come to some kind of an agreement on this, and I think we're all on the same page. So what do my fellow commissioners say to that? Mr., excuse me, Mr. Stockton?
Yeah, I want to try to help Frank out.
Yeah, because you're not going to be here.
Yeah, he's going to be the guy negotiating with his staff there. And what John's point is, is that the payments aren't due for the 17, 18 fiscal year until January, until calendar year 18, January, calendar year 18. So, so, so the time span that you have and that you probably need is from now until some meeting before January, because, again, the payments that affect your fiscal year budget that you're working on don't really happen until calendar year of 18. And so I think that, this is what, the fourth month? So that, that gives you 8, 11 months to actually work out, actually gives you, yeah, 8 months to primarily work out the interlocal agreement there. But the urgency for them is going to be, they have to have something in place by January of 18. Again, that's affecting everybody's 17, 18 budget. So that's really the timeframe that you're looking at.
So would December 1st work? Does that sound like a number that would work with all of you folks?
I would say for our city, I'm sure I could get together our, have a joint workshop with the two CRAs that are affected, the city council. We could discuss stuff. And then also, keep in mind, we also have to come and meet with the county commissioner, the county, and then after we come to an agreement among staff, then it's got to go before each respective body. So you're not, 60 days is just, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing.
Well, I like the idea of having December 1st, because if some of you folks can get it done by August, in other words, we're not going to be inundated all one time. So you might come to us October 1st, and Satellite Beach might-
I could commit for the City of Cocoa. We will work on getting, being before you before December 1st. I can't talk, you know, and I don't represent the other CRAs.
Let's listen to hear from some of the other representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mike McNeese, Melbourne City Manager. A practical concern here is, the way this is shaping up is, it would require, unless a certain bilateral action is taken by a certain date, there are consequences to how the funding is handled in the CRAs. Well, the cities don't have the ability unilaterally to make that happen. So you're, in a way, asking us to commit to the adoption of an interlocal agreement that we only control half of. It doesn't take just the city's votes. So I really liked your thought earlier about, well, I think we're all working in good faith here. I think when you start to put a hammer at the end of that process, that the cities have, you're asking us to commit to a successful outcome, to a process that we don't completely control, it puts us in an awkward position.
No, I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I think what we're talking about here is having a final date, that you and I, you and us, will come to an agreement. So that, and if we put it far enough out, if you address your side of it, and then you come back to us, whether it's in July, or August, or whatever, we can certainly complete this by the 1st of December. And if the other, the other communities do the same, in other words, if we're not all on the tight, same tight budget, I mean, same tight schedule, then you guys can work it out at your leisure. You can come back to us. When you come to us with your side, then we're going to work on it immediately.
And I think, speaking for Melbourne, for sure, and I think this will apply to most of the cities, the interlocal agreement, in a way, is just like the CRA. It's just a tool. It doesn't say any, it's just a way you get something done. The more quickly we can understand, what do y'all want in that interlocal agreement? What do you, what-
We'll give you some guidelines.
Then the faster we can get that, the faster we can move that process.
We can do that. I'm sure that we can do that. The commission can do that. Mr. Cottie?
I just wanted to interject something here, okay? I know you're from Commissioner Tobias, or yourself, you want to pin us to a date. But the reality here, my city manager's not here. All of my council members are not here. You're asking me to make a decision on something that I need other elected officials with me to make.
I understand that.
What I ask is that if you allow us from this day to go back and respond to you, to the commission, within a week or two weeks, get back to you and say, okay, this is what we, we could commit to, to you. I've seen certain city managers say, I could commit to that, but I can't give you that right now. I don't have my city managers here. I don't have my full council members that I could talk to and tell them exactly what's going on before I make a true decision for the City of Palm Bay. But we could, we could get back to you on that.
Mr. Zardini?
I would just say, you know, if, within eight months, if it takes, you know, even if it's a meeting that we have a joint meeting with each municipality, yeah, it adds more meetings, but I think what, we have nine in this month already, public meetings. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. But if we can't come to an interlocal agreement within eight months, I mean, we're both inefficient as governments or as elected bodies.
And I don't see that happening. I see, we, Courtney, when did we first come up with this idea for this? Two months ago? So you guys have done an awful lot in two months. And I have no doubt that you can get together, and in that time, we can give you feedback on what we're looking for, what we want in this interlocal agreement. And again, we have to craft each one individually, but we can give you guidelines.
We need to, we need to let us know what you want.
Right. And then you'll have until, I'm suggesting December 1st. My commissioners can come up with a different date, but I think that's, I think it's doable.
And if, heaven forbid, something happened, or there was like a lot of drama on, you know, on municipalities' end, or even on our end, then, I mean, we could handle those circumstances. But if we can get at least the majority of those interlocal agreements done by that date, I think that we're doing a good job, because I think-
I don't see any reason why we can't.
I don't either. And, but I'm just saying, if that's the concern, I think we can address that.
Hey, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I want to say is, we're working through these interlocal agreements, and I know we said we're doing it individually, but my intent with them is just to set up a time period, time certain of how long they're going to last, and how we're working repayment. I in no way, shape, or form want to set up agreements to micromanage your CRAs. I think that needs to stay with home rule. So I, I think, as we're moving towards that, I think that's the intent of our commission, because I listen to you guys when you speak. So I think that needs to be a determining factor as we're moving forward, because I don't think we really want to mind your business. You seem to be doing a pretty good job. So that's something we're looking for in our local agreement, that we have a time certain for it to expire, and, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Henry?
In good faith, can you pull, you have a resolution, right? You do? And, Mr. Tobias, if you pull your resolutions, in good faith, we'll just come back to you in a-
No, I intended to pull mine.
Yeah. And if Mr. Tobias does that, then we can have an agreement, we have agreement already, then we'll come back in our, in a reasonable amount of time, won't be two months.
I'm sorry, but this was published, you know, here. We, you know, you've come to the, you've had the opportunity to come to a couple of board meetings.
Sure.
This was planned out long, previous. I'm just asking for, you know, I'm just asking for us to sit down, exactly what you guys asked for, an interlocal agreement. I'm not stuck on 60 days. If you cannot, as a council, sit down within the next five or six months, and, and listen, I'll go five or, I'll go five or six months. I mean, this is something that has been happening for a very long time.
It sure has.
But if we can't come to an agreement, that, six months, I mean, we, we don't move very quickly, but six months, I don't know how many town meetings, how many city meetings, city-
Twice a week, I mean, twice a month.
Twice a month.
Plus others. So you'll have, what, 10 or, you'll have 10 or 12 meetings. I mean, if we push this out till, if you, if you can't figure it out, I mean, I'll make a commitment here within a week to have what I hope to-
Why not just pull it?
-have an interlocal agreement, you know, as a framework, you know, as we move forward. So that would give you-
Well, I would think that our intent would be, each one of us, each of the commissioners is going to put our wants down on paper.
Absolutely.
And so then we can put them together, we'll get with, with Frank, and we'll have you. Stockton, are you happy? We'll get with Frank, and we'll set up a little workshop, and we can, we can hammer those items out, and then we can present them to the folks. And I think they, they've already indicated a willingness to work with us. We don't have to hammer them with a resolution to make them work with us. I don't, I don't think that, I don't think we need to do that.
Right, that's exactly right. I understand that thing.
So I would, I would-
Yeah, that's reaching, so.
Respectfully request that you pull your resolution.
Just pull it, and let's get the job done.
And let's just go forward.
Just pull it.
Commissioner Smith, can I say something?
Let's do it.
Commissioner Zardini, you have the floor.
Okay. And I, and I would agree with that. I mean, this is a public meeting, and I think that we can hold everybody accountable. And if, and if something happens where we get a lot of grief, we simply bring it back. I'll be the one to bring this back if we can't get interlocal agreements by the people that have committed today. So I think that's probably the fair thing to do.
Chair recognizes Mr. Barfield.
You know, another point to take is, we have Tallahassee right now with a bill, both in the House and the Senate going through now. We'll know a lot more about that at a later date here. I personally think, I think they're both going to go, and the governor will probably sign it. It'll probably, but we, that would give us another thing to look at, to make sure we're in compliance with that and everything is safe.
Mr. Chairman, I get one thing-
Yes, sir.
-on what we're doing in Cocoa Beach. We kind of suspended encumbering any additional debt to finalize our, our specifications for a design build on our parking garage, and a lot of that is our city money that we'd be putting into that also. The outcome of this meeting, is it going to release us for that, from that encumbrance, or will we be held until these inter, oh, local agreements are in place?
Let me ask, Jim, have you any clue how long this debt is going to last for, because it's mostly your money that you-
2031 and with the overall project.
We're looking, our debt, we're looking at 15 years.
Okay.
Okay. That's our plan. And that was what I was going to ask of you, is, we'd like to get your input. In our case, 60 days may be what we want to do, because we're trying to progress with the project. So your input to us is very valuable to move ours along. Maybe we'll be the guinea pig. Maybe we'll be the first one.
Well, let me just remind the commission that-
But we, we, in good faith, we, we said, okay, we'll hold off-
Exactly.
-until we have this meeting. So we just want to know, going out of here, I mean, I'm willing to proceed at risk with our money, if you'll let, proceed at risk with the little, the part of it, the CRA money, so we can move this project forward. And then if it ends up that something happens, and we can't, you know, put out for bids and get the loans for the overall project, then we'll eat it. But I'd like to be able to move forward as of today and have that in the record somewhere.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to remind my fellow commissioners that I had asked the City of Cocoa Beach to postpone committing themselves to that debt until we had this chance to have a meeting. So from that standpoint, I personally would like to see them go forward. I don't think that 14 years is going to affect us one way or another on, on these negotiations. But it's up to the rest of the board. They're not forced, we're not twisting their arm. I just simply asked them to not go forward. So I guess we really don't have any, any reason to ask them not to. But I just want to ask the rest of the board if you guys have thoughts on that. Are you good with that?
Well, I, in reality, we don't have any legal authority to keep them from doing it.
Exactly.
And, and number two, you know, since their interlocal agreement is going to be unique, you know, I hesitate without knowing, you know, the terms of everybody here, and without thinking of those terms, I hesitate to say, okay, well, maybe part of their interlocal agreement is that their CRA will sunset in 15 years. You know, maybe they would be okay with that, maybe they would not. But, you know, their main focus was that-
They've already indicated they are.
Right, but that, but their main focus was that project. But that would mean that their entire council would have to agree to that.
Mayor.
So I hesitate to commit.
Well, we're opening, we've opened our bids, and we're voting on our road project Tuesday night. So part of that is going to be community redevelopment fund. So are we still under a moratorium?
No, I would say, personally, there is no moratorium. It was just something that I asked as a favor. So I'm rescinding that, that ask. And you can go forward and do whatever you have to do for your communities.
Thank you.
And the last thing I'd like to say is, the president of the Space Coast League of Cities said it right. We're never going to get to perfection, but if we, if we try to do all this with all these cities, and your guys' schedules in 60 days, and if we try to do it before December 1st, you're going to get a lot closer to perfection in the December 1st time ra, frame than you are in 60 days. So appreciate it really.
Here's what I would suggest at this point. Let's set up something within the next two weeks. And each of the commissioners jot down the wants that you-
Yeah, I think, I think, and I'm not expecting this to pass, but anything that comes out, you know, of my office, I don't expect to pass. But a lot of time went through this. I sat at this table and said that I was willing to cut dollars to charities that are working very darn hard to feed people that have trouble getting out of their houses. Because the chairman said that we need to find money for roads. And now I have a bunch of CRAs that have come in front of us and said they are spending tax dollars to add value to private businesses, benefiting individual business owners. And we are saying that that's okay by not even agreeing to sit down at a future date. Some are saying 60 days, some are saying December 1st, but-
So we are, we are not saying that. What we are saying is that we're going to do exactly that. What you're saying, I guess, is that you don't trust them to do it. Is that what you're saying?
That's what he's saying.
I am saying, I have a resolution. I am saying, I have put down 60 days. I'm saying I'm not stuck on 60 days.
Right.
But I tell you what happens when we make agreements that aren't written or enforceable. We have to call in the National Guard to staff our emergency shelters, because we're not prepared. So it's not that I don't trust any of these individuals. I think they're great public servants that are working hard for, for their, for their constituents, just the same way as I am. And I hope that we can sit down and at least say, within a certain period of time, I am not stuck on 60 days. But I am saying this is very important, because hundreds, just of the little information I got back, hundreds, you heard that this was private money, private, this was, sorry, this was public money that was going to signs, that was painting facades.
It's the way it was signed.
When we have, I'm sorry, I have, I have the-
It's blind.
That makes no sense.
Wait, wait, Mr. Tobias has the floor.
This is a county commission meeting, I'm sorry. But I cannot believe, I cannot believe, as responsible stewards, that this board is going to say that that action, nothing against a parking structure, because I think there's a great deal, not that I agree with, with that use of resources, but it's a great deal better of public resources than our hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands, because that's what it is, a facade that went to used car, one of them went to a used car lot. So I don't, I'm putting down exactly what the CRA said as far-
Mr. Tobias, do you want us to vote on that? Is that what you want?
Absolutely. And absolutely, I'd like to-
Because from my, from where I sit, we're going to get where you want to go. We're just not going to make sure it's on paper. We're going to, we're going to make sure it gets done, because we have an awful lot of honest, hardworking, decent, honest people out here that we're working with.
And if, and if they were-
And if you don't, if you don't think they are, then let's vote on that, and let's see what the rest of the commission thinks.
And if, and if they had the exact same faith in us as we have in them, then they would agree within a certain period of time. Listen, again, again, I'm not stuck to 60 days. Listen, again, again, I'm not stuck to 60 days. If we say December 1st, as you suggested, heck, I have, you, you heard one of the CRAs say, hey, they want it within 60 days. But if we said by December 1st, for budgeting reasons, that we can sit down and, and deal with, deal with this by then, and I don't know what the outcome is, by putting it down in paper, I think it's best for everyone to have a contract working off of, because if we don't, I don't, I don't think that-
If we don't, what, where, where are you going with that?
We, we end up with another workshop that gets kicked down the can. We all knew this was coming. We all knew this was coming. But we have to, we have to look at the precious dollars that taxpayers are sending us, and part of those tax, tax dollars are going out to these, these, these folks. Some may be correct, some may be incorrect, but I haven't had the, I haven't had the luxury to look at it. But that was the, that was the charge that you made to us, and by saying, we're not going to look at this almost $7 million?
I personally don't have a problem with December 1st. Makes no difference to me. If you want to make it December 1st, I'm sure everybody out here can live with December 1st. We're going to go forward anyway, because we're going to schedule a meeting so that the five of us can put our wants down, we can communicate those wants with our partners here, they at the same time can go back to their commissions and hammer out how they're going to do it, and we'll get it done.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, I routinely meet with all the city councils within my district, and we have a relationship that's very strong. And I trust each one of them, because I know, I can go to them, I know these guys real well, and I can say, listen, we have got to get this done, we'll do it, and I know, I know 100% that they'll get it done. So I'm not worried about this. I mean, I trust them, I know what's going on, and they, they're serving their community just like we are. So that's all I have to say on that.
Chairman?
Commissioner Zarnardi?
See, I'm looking ahead into the future 15 minutes, and what I see is, if this resolution fails, and you can pretty much count votes and know that it will, even if I was to support it, because I think honestly, it's just, it protects us as a county. However, if this resolution fails, then we're definitely not, no one's bound by this. So it's a lose-lose. I would say, bring the resolution back, table it for now, if we don't see movement, if we don't get feedback, if we don't, if we feel like we're getting pushback, where there may be, there may be a municipality, municipality out there that doesn't want to go interlocal, and then we have to bring this back, but we still keep the deadline of December 1st. And that protects us too, because I'll tell you, I've seen resolutions come across the bow by some of these municipalities, and I would ask, you know, as a side note, with all due respect, you don't have to agree with what anybody says up here, you know, with commissioners, but to hear people and elected officials curse in the background, that's very disrespectful, and if I hear that again up here, I will call you out by name, because I think that's terrible. I think we need to respect one another, no matter if you agree with Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Tobias, or Mayor McCormick, it doesn't matter. We should treat each other with respect, and I don't want to cause further divide. So I don't like being in this position. I don't like to have to call people out, and I don't like to have to vote on this, because I don't want there to be further divide. At the same time, I want to protect us as a county, because I sat up here and listened, and I appreciate that the, that the feedback from the municipalities wasn't as contentious as it's been in the past, but to hear how these cities feel like the county's not providing services, and to know that the county, you know, provides $123 million from the Sheriff's Department, our fire rescue, our parks and rec, our libraries, our natural resources, our transit services, and our community resources, to hear that they, we're getting all this money, and we just don't care about what happens in your communities, is not a fair assessment. So, you know, I'm on the fence on this. I, I know I legally can abstain, but at the same time, I do have to protect our interests, because we are responsible. However, I don't like having to be forced to vote on this, because I think that, you know, I would hope that we are a team, that we all are members of the same club, and I think that we need to just, just be mindful of the dialogue, you know, not just between us as commissioners, or us with our municipalities, but, I mean, I was a city council member for two terms, and so I have been on both sides of this now, and I think that we need to work together, and I think that, you know, either way, it's a lose-lose.
Words well spoken.
It's not a win-win, it's a lose-lose.
Any other commissioners?
I just want to say, if you guys hadn't come forward saying you wanted to get to an interlocal agreement, I have no reason to put you in one. I have seen nothing but good relationships with the cities, and I don't know of one that's done anything. In my experience with where I come from, I, I serve a great community. But since you're willing to do it, and I've heard other commissioners before saying they'd like to do it, and everybody's in agreement, I think it's a great place to be. I'm just ask that you do your best to get it done quickly. I believe you'll do it, because it was your idea. So thank you for all your work, and looking forward to getting into some type of agreement here and move everybody forward.
Mr. Tobias?
Yeah, I'm going to, you know, it's a pyrrhic, but let, let's, yeah, I'm certainly not going to, to pull this. As Reagan said, right, trust but verify, and that, that's what this document is, is verification, not only for us, but for all of the, the CRAs out there. So I would like to amend it from the 60 days to December 1st of 2017. So there's no confusion, and, and if it, I don't, if there's no second on it, that's A-OK, but certainly want to-
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tobias to extend this resolution to a December 1st adoption. Do we have a second?
I'll second with discussion.
You got the floor.
And I'll start the discussion. And the only reason why is that, you know, and I do mean this with the utmost respect, because again, I've been on both sides of this. I, this is not ego, this is not, oh, I'm a county commissioner, but this is a county commissioner meeting, this is something that we brought to a county commission meeting to hear from the municipalities, to go over the, to go over the items, and I think that this is the responsible thing, because this is what we as a board has, have decided. It's not saying we don't trust the cities. However, if I'm forced to vote on this resolution, I will support it, because I think that's, it's a very good compromise from where we were, from, you know, trying to shut them down, trying to stop them from borrowing money, trying to do what we could legally to get rid of them. The interlocal agreements will take care of some of the issues that we may have, and this actually protects us as a county. So I think that this is a fair compromise to support this.
Yeah. Commissioners, you have any comment?
Can I get a point of clarification? I know it's on my place, but he mentioned-
Well, it is, because I want to, I want to open it up for public discussion. I want to hear what you guys have to say.
Thank you, sir.
So is anybody from the cities wish to respond? Ms. Barker?
I just wanted to clarify, I think, what Mike was trying to say earlier. When that resolution has a provision in there that talks about not providing the next phase of funding if an interlocal agreement doesn't come to you by December 1st, and that really puts the cities in a really negative position, and actually a down position in any negotiations. That's the first problem. And the second problem is, there, I think there's many of our attorneys that would disagree with the fact that that's even a legal provision. And thirdly, if we're all trying to be friends here and get something done, you may have a complicated project, infrastructure project that you're trying to get through, and now you have this timeframe that, you know, is going to work against both parties. So I, I agree that we all will try to get this done by December 1st, or 31st, or whatever date that was, but to put provisions in there that would make us not friends if that doesn't happen is, is not a good thing. And I, that's, I think most of the cities here would agree with me on that point.
Mayor Capote?
I couldn't echo the words that Courtney just said. I think that, like I continue to say, we could agree to disagree, but we're all adults here. We're all adults. We're giving our word. What, I don't understand the issue. We're adults, and we're going to come back to you, and you could take my word as gospel. Like I said, you have, you, we have other elected officials that we have to consult with. I have to go back to my city manager, and I think that there's a lot of people in this room that have to do the same thing. So I believe that understanding that aspect of it, that we should go on good faith. I don't see any other way around this. I know you need to make your decision when it comes to, to, because this is your meeting, and we're the visitors. And I totally comprehend that.
Would any of our other public officials like to weigh in?
Yeah, I would.
I would.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that what you said, I wish that would apply to everybody on this commission, because we should all be treated with respect and dignity. We are all elected by our constituents, we take the same oath of office that you do, and being called a name by a member of this commission is highly unethical. And I don't think that should ever happen, because we came here in good faith, we all serve our constituents, we work very hard for our cities. I work full-time as a mayor, as a strong mayor, and I came here with nothing but good feelings as far as cooperation. We think the interlocal agreement is a great idea, we want to work with you, but we want to work with you and be treated with respect, and I think we deserve that. Thank you.
Mayor?
Chairman, just a clarification. Earlier in your discussion, when you were going over the resolution, and turned out to be these four points on the last page, Commissioner Tobias alluded to potentially deleting item three, which is the keeping there from being any new CRAs, and I, and I don't envision any for new CRAs for Cocoa Beach, but I can't tell the absolute future, future, future. But if you pass this resolution today, as it was moved and seconded, and that item three is still in there, you're basically saying, no, no new CRAs, that would be part of the resolution, unless it's amended by one of the parties.
Please don't-
Mr. Parrish?
Support this resolution.
Chairman, I agree. Please don't support this. Let's work together, and we'll get it done. That's my word, and I think that's, I can speak for everybody else.
Sir?
Sorry, I have to deal with Courtney.
I just feel it's not one of the ten, so only philosophically, I would say, I was like, I agree with what has been said by Mayor Capote and Ms. Barker. We should go in in good faith.
Well, I have no intention of supporting it, because you guys have worked with me to get this done, and we, you did a phenomenal job to get it done in two months or less, and I have no doubt that going forward, we can get this done. And so, and each one's going to be a separate issue. We're going to do our part, you're going to do your part, and by the end of the year, we're going to have this thing settled. So, and, and I look forward to that too, because as, I'm sure all of you look forward to it, because then we don't have to do this every two weeks. Because I've been on this board for two and a half years, and I've been seeing this, I mean, it's like, it's like I see it in my dreams. So we have a, we have a motion on, on the table, and we have a second. Commissioner Tobias made the motion, it was seconded by Commissioner Zarnardi, all those, excuse me.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure, absolutely.
And the reason, I mean, I understand Ms. Barker's reservations, obviously, I mean, she brings up some valid points, but, you know, I just want to remind everybody that it's never been the municipalities' practice to not send resolutions to us when they want us to do something and when they're not happy. And the reason, again, I have to question why everyone's so against a resolution if it solves the problem. If everybody is on the same page, then we can put at the top of it, this is a friendly agreement, if that makes everyone feel better, but I think this puts us in a better position, because if everybody's in good faith going to act on this and going to abide by these rules, the resolution harms no one except protecting us. And I don't believe the votes are there, but I just wanted to make that, those comments for the record.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Fails 3-2?
Oh, my God. Josh.
So that brings us to the end of our-
And you pulled yours?
Did you pull yours?
And I pulled mine. Mine is done. I've got nothing. Do we have any other issues?
We have another.
Yeah, we have another one.
What's, what's the other one that we have?
Ms. Turner.
Mr. Pritchett?
You remember Mr. Karen from the other night?
Let's just say-